The April 20th special hearing continuation. If you would, please rise for the pledge allegiance followed by a prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dear God, please watch over our township, our residents, our businesses, our administration, our public works. Please watch over our first responders, our fire department, and our sheriff. And please watch over the men and women around the world protecting us every night and every day with the US military. Amen. Roll call, please.
Mr. Beck?
Here.
Ms. Leece?
Here.
Mr. Bryant?
Here.
I move approval of the agenda.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Beck?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Ms. Leece?
Aye.
Thank you all for being here this evening. This is a continuation of a public hearing that was initiated last Tuesday, April 11th. We had, by my count, thirty-five speakers that evening looking at a rezoning option being discussed. We had comments from both sides, and at the end of that public hearing on the 11th, we asked both sides to get together over the course of the next week and tried to come to an agreement. And that's what we're here to continue that process. So we're kind of picking up from that point and moving ahead. Did you have something?
I just wanted the people talking. Can you go tell the people talking?
Do you mind pulling those? Thanks.
Thank you.
You might tell the meeting started if they're coming in. A lot of times you've got a long line signing in.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. All right. Welcome. So with that brief introduction, I would like to start if the applicant has any new information to present. And just please come to the podium, state your name, address.
My name is Brian Dahl at Cincinnati Contractors, 7143 East Kemper Road, representing the Silver Spring House. I just wanted to, well, you know, just kind of reiterate, we believe we've come to an agreement with the neighbors immediately adjacent to Silver Spring House property. And I'd like to outline some of the changes since the last meeting. And that's all I'm going to do right now. So the fence along the northern buffer and eastern have changed from six foot to eight foot.
Height.
Height. In height, yes. Six foot to eight foot height.
So like a mound and then a fence?
Yes.
Okay.
There is a, yeah. This fence right here in the northern is on a mound right here.
Okay.
And I'll show you that in the sections as well. A total of sixteen spaces have been removed from the site. So the twelve parallel parking spaces that were here are now gone. And then we took out four interior spaces to shift this line over about nine feet. So now that leaves us a buffer of thirty-three foot six on the northern and sixty-nine foot one on the eastern. A couple of the sections have been added to this plan. And kind of show you the way the grade looks in relationship of the height of the fence to the parking lot. Yeah, section cut one and two. So if you look at section cut two, which is looking through this area right here on the eastern side to the detention. So you can see the property line is right here. So from the, at the property line, the grade height from the top of the fence would be about nine foot ten. And then from the top of the parking to the fence would be about eight foot six.
What do you mean by grade height to the top of the fence?
So from the perspective of the neighbors.
Okay.
So if you're standing at the neighbor's property line.
Okay.
Looking towards the fence.
Okay.
You would basically see that fence be nine foot ten tall from your perspective.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
And then the other section cut, section one, is along the northern, which is right here. Again, you can see at the property line of the neighbors from their perspective. The fence is eleven foot four tall from their perspective.
Okay.
And it's about eleven foot one tall from the top of the parking. And this fence is on top of the height of the berm.
Okay.
To get the most screen of capability.
Question?
Sure.
Is there two fences?
There is one continuous fence that runs.
On the east side?
That runs along the parking lot.
Okay.
Now, there may be existing fences here from the neighbors. There are some.
Okay.
But we're not proposing any new fences along the area, just along the parking.
Ken, it's in the red. It's in the red. See that red dotted line? That's the fence he's referring to?
Yes.
And that's the fence Silver Spring House is putting in, right?
Yes. And then something else we've changed is, since we've moved the parking back more towards the west, we have been able to grade that out and eliminate most of the retaining wall. There's a block retaining wall that was here last time. The only place we have it is right down at the bottom here, just to transition that transition of the existing to new detention right here.
And there's a water problem there. So this still will take care of that water problem?
Absolutely. Yes. And you may be stuck in traffic, but I was supposed to have a civil engineer here to respond to any stormwater questions that you had.
Okay.
Where, I'm sorry, where was the water problem? The whole, on the north?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. And again, just to reiterate, we are collecting every amount of water that is on our safe site, draining it to the detention, and then going out to East Kemper.
But you're also solving some of the existing problem was there on this other property, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
And then regarding the landscaping. Should I just keep on that? We've added, the same amount of trees have remained on the northern buffer, but on the eastern buffer, we've increased the trees. We got a little more flat area near this since we squeezed up the detention a little bit with the parking lot moving.
What type of trees are that? I'm sorry.
Say it again.
What type of trees?
So there are a mix of arborvitae's, green giant arborvitae's, and a few deciduous trees.
Okay.
Pride screening. And just to give you the updated statistics on those, so the northern buffer yard is about thirty-four percent more than what's required as opposed to zero percent in the last one. The northern buffer yard has stayed consistent with four hundred percent more than what's required for trees. The northern buffer yard has stayed consistent with a hundred percent more than was required of shrubs. The eastern buffer yard has increased one hundred and seventy-six percent from what is required. So it went from sixty and a half to about sixty-nine. The amount of trees has increased from two hundred percent to four hundred percent along the eastern buffer yard. The interior vehicular landscape, use landscaping has upped from sixty-eight percent above to eighty-six percent above. The interior trees has upped from eight point three percent to nine point oh nine percent above. And then the shrubs have gone slightly down, but a hundred and twelve percent above required. And then as far as the photometric is concerned, we have eliminated three of the pole lights in the photometric that were along the northern property line. That used to be right here. Those pole lights are gone now. And again, we still maintain a zero foot candle level around the entire property line. Are there any questions for me on what I presented for the changes?
The fence on the eastern wall next to the parking area, is that nine feet, eleven feet? What is it?
It's an eight foot tall fence.
Okay.
And when I was saying about the different heights, it was based upon the perspective of where you're standing.
Right.
So if you stand at a lower grade, it'll look taller to you.
Correct.
And that's what I was talking about.
Well, I was just asking what the height of the fence itself was.
Yeah, the height of the fence is eight foot.
Okay.
Yeah. Depends what it's known. Any other questions?
No. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, would you like to come up?
I think there are two things to note. First of all, Mr. Burke can speak to it, but I believe the residents that he represents have agreed to this. There was some back and forth, but we reached that. And then there's still the question of getting final approval from the county on this. And I think the engineering components of that just need to be approved per normal.
Per normal. I mean, Burke's about.
Okay, great. So that's it. And we appreciate the residents' cooperation, if I'm correct about that. Mr. Burke can speak to that.
Okay. Anyone else from the applicant's side? Okay. Mr. Burke?
Aye.
From the neighbor's side?
Just briefly, and I know your legal counsel and I have had a conversation about this before the meeting started. The one request we would make is to incorporate, at least by reference, the joint statement that we have presented to you as a part of your resolution, to the extent permitted by law. And one of the, you all asked us to be creative, and I think between the parties, we were. One of the discussions that remains live and I think valuable to everybody is particularly the issue around landscaping. For instance, the property closest to Snyder Road has some beautiful landscaping that was planted by the property owners on this property with the permission of the last resident of the property. It's still very healthy. It contains some arborvitae's and some other trees. There's an agreement in place to continue to work with one another to see if some of what's there can't simply be left where it is to the benefit of everybody. That would modify, not in a major way, these plans, but it would create some modification to them. There is also some hope that maybe because the buffer has been increased, it may be possible to save a mature tree or two that is one of the healthy trees left on the site. And nobody has determined for certain that can be done, but neither has that been ruled out as a possibility. That still remains alive. So the point is that there could be some changes agreed to between the immediate neighbors and Silver Springs and their people that would result in some modifications to the landscaping plan. We'd like it to be recognized that that's an effort to make this work for everybody as much as possible. That's why I think there is a benefit of at least recognizing the joint statement as a part of it. I know everybody was rushing around the last two days trying to make sure everybody saw everything. I think in the end, it appears to have worked. To be truthful, my clients would still rather see this remain as it is today. These folks, I'm sure, would still rather have all one hundred and twenty-five parking spaces that they originally asked for. This is a product of some compromise and some working together. And the fact that we got to this result honestly is in part a tribute to the three of you who put that burden on all of us when we were last here. And it worked. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I'm going to throw my pen at you. If I may, a quick question for the law director. Based on Mr. Burke's statement, is there any reason why we can't incorporate the bullet point as a reference? Or I'm not sure how we.
Right. Right. And Mr. Burke and I did speak about that prior to the meeting. If that's, if that's something that the trustees are interested in doing, it can be added. Essentially, I think you could add it as, there's already a list of conditions in the proposed resolution. It could just be added as the, you know, a final condition that says you're incorporating that. I think it would be important to have some phrase there that's like, "to the extent permitted by law," or something to that effect, because while we appreciate the creativity and what they've done here, there are certain elements of this that we wouldn't be able to enforce. It has to do with some back and forth process with the neighbors and Silver Spring House. We can enforce when it gets down to the code level, obviously. And that's what this says. So I think as long as it is captured in a way that says, you know, "to the extent permitted by law, you want to incorporate this statement," I think that would be fine. And I think everyone would understand the limitations of what that means.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Before we open it up for new comments? You want, okay. So we've heard from both sides, and at this point, I'd like to open it up to the audience if there's anyone that would like to provide comments based on the new information this evening. Yes, please come to the podium, state your name and address.
My name is Kim Shieldneck, 118309. Apologize for the, look, I just had some surgery, but I just want to say.
Hope everything went okay.
None of this really had to happen. If you guys would have just came to me and we would have sat with our neighbors, talked about this reasonably, understood your position, instead of bringing in tons of people that really had no relevance to this situation, we would have gladly worked with you. We would have came up with this solution with all this, without this other nonsense. So.
Sarah, actually, you need to address the board.
But, I get it. But I wanted to look him in the eyes.
I understand.
So that's just my point. We're reasonable people. We don't think that Silver Spring House are bad folks. We go there, we like them. But my point is, none of this stuff needed to happen if they would have just sat down reasonably with us. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want to comment that people of Petrella have been over the top nice and easy to work with. In their comments last time, they were very complimentary of the Silver Spring House. So I'm, I just want to say, yes, Petrella residents have been great.
Ken, did you have something you wanted to say earlier?
See if there's anyone else.
Yeah. Anybody else wants to come to the podium this evening? Okay. Ken?
You're.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Assistant Jester, 8367 Hamiltonian. So one of the problems with this corner of Kemper and Snyder is it's between two townships, Sycamore on one side, Sims on the other. I was at the Sycamore Township meeting on Monday, and they just approved five hundred-seat stadium at the high school. That project is going forward. Thousand-seat stadium to the junior high, and now, I don't know what the number of parking spots is now. Hundred, two hundred?
Twenty-four. How many?
Anybody have a real number?
Ninety-one.
No.
Okay. Ninety-one. So that's roughly another hundred. So that's sixteen hundred parking spaces on projects that are going to be in this corner. You're just setting it up for accidents with school buses and kids. And I know you say you can't vote because of traffic, but the concern that I have as a resident there is all the traffic converging on that corner. And I know you didn't vote the five hundred-seat stadium in because that's not your township. But, and then, of course, the other property right down the hill that just got rezoned that was residential. And also, the other thing, when I went to Sycamore, they said, "we've also never overturned what the BZA and the Hamilton County Planning Commission." And that's all we ask from you. You have a master plan and zoning, please follow it.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak? Ken, did you have some comments? I had a couple of questions to see if, in the agreement between the two sides, the following issues were addressed, or whether we need to put restrictions in this resolution. Number one has to do with outdoor music in the parking lots and so on? That was an issue that was brought up by the residents in the surrounding area?
My understanding is it's not addressed. My clients have testified that in thirty-five years, you've done it less times than on my hand. So it's just, from our perspective, it's not an issue. We don't intend to, it's never been a problem. We're as neighborly as we can be, and we'll work with them, but we've never done it. And when you did do it, it stopped at ten PM. Is that right?
Actually, it's one time in the parking lot.
One time in the parking, the rest of it's indoor mu, do you have live music inside?
I don't.
No.
I said exterior. I didn't say interior.
Exterior, you've done it one time on your twentieth anniversary, so it was fifteen years ago. So from our perspective, it's a non-issue. It did not, to my understanding, come up in the negotiations.
Okay. Secondly, noise, dumpster noise and things like that in off-hours?
That's a great question. I actually talked to my clients about that. Of all the things that came up in the testimony, the one that I felt strongly about it, because I've heard dumpsters at two in the morning, and they're loud. And you all have committed to address that. So that did not come up in negotiations, but we had already intended to address that ourselves as a good neighbor.
For the benefit of the residents in that area, if there's a dumpster before seven AM, call the township police, okay? Because that violates our noise ordinance.
Yeah. Like I say, I took it very seriously.
So we can keep that out of your bailiwick.
Sure.
If the residents are aware that they can complain.
Sure.
Third, there is big concern about runaway cars and so on. If you take out the five-foot concrete wall with the six-foot wall on top of it, and now you put in this three-foot berm with an eight-foot fence, you're still eleven feet, but it doesn't necessarily solve a runaway car problem. Has that been addressed by both parties to your satisfaction?
It did come up in the negotiations as an issue.
Okay.
My clients are not, I would say, willing to put in the concrete barrier. And I think Mr. Burke, some of his clients were conflicted that it doesn't look as good as the berm.
Okay.
I don't know that, but we weren't willing to do it. From my perspective, there's.
First, my question was, was it addressed?
It came up, and it was not.
And if you're saying it was, I'm satisfied. Okay? The fourth one really has to do with, is it Silver Spring House's policy to police their property for trash, broken bottles, and so on that are thrown over the wall?
You mean from our property to?
Either on the east or on the north?
From our property onto adjoining property. Not just police our own parking lot, but look to see that people aren't throwing trash over the fence.
Yeah, but if you have a lot of kids on the other side of that fence and so on and so forth, even though it's landscaped and so on, I would like to see Silver Spring House police their own property.
Well, no, I.
Not on a daily basis, but, you know, periodically.
First of all, as to our property, we do, and they keep it regularly clean. It's immaculate when I've ever been there.
On the side of fence.
On everything that would be something we own. And I would think that if somebody threw something over the fence, it still would have a hard time getting on the east side over to Mr. Roddymacher's property. And on the north side through the arborvitae, that fence is still twenty-five feet from the property line? Twenty feet?
Yeah, around twenty-five.
So, but I don't have any, I mean, do you all have any problem occasionally going over and seeing if that becomes an issue? If it becomes an issue, we'll be glad to address it.
Thank you.
Or if it becomes an issue.
Sure. I mean, just let us know.
Yeah. Even if you let us know, we can.
Somebody did bring that up. There were bottles.
Yes, there was one person that came and testified at the end of the last meeting that basically said he had small kids, and there were broken bottles and things thrown over the fence. Okay? And it may not have been on their property because of the existing footprint.
Like I say, they would have to go over the eleven-foot.
Yes.
Fence.
Understand.
And then through the arborvitae's to get to the adjoining property. In the case of Mr. Roddymacher's property, you have to travel sixty feet in order to do that. But I think it's reasonable that we be good neighbors and check that out. Absolutely.
Okay. Not going to try and put the restriction, I just want the cognizance. Okay?
Just to explain where that particular concern.
Would you mind speaking in the microphone, Mr. Burke? Thank you.
Sorry. It came from another Petrella resident, but it's property that backs onto the extended parking area that Silver Springs uses in the office complex.
Okay.
Next door. And, well, that's not their property.
It is their property? Or does it belong to the Lucky Three Building?
I can address that if you like.
Please.
Yeah. So my understanding is that to the east of this property, along Kemper Road, are the three.
Yes.
Office condominiums. That is owned by, actually, I guess, the owners individually of those office condominiums, and then there's common areas for the condominiums. As a condition of their zoning, they needed our access on East Kemper shared, and so they agreed to allow us in the evenings after six PM to use their parking lot. So our parking lot expands by sixty-five spaces at night.
Fifty-one.
And on weekends, maybe?
Fifty-one, isn't it?
And so we do have, Mr. Burke is correct, we do have our patrons parking over there in the evenings, and I think it's appropriate for you all to keep an eye on that. And because there will be no fence over there, it'll be pretty easy to keep an eye on that because you don't have to go to the other side of the fence. You could just look, see if people are trash in the area. And if you all become aware of that, again, we want to be great neighbors, not good neighbors, these are great operators, and we would be glad to address it. So Joe, or Joe, give out your number to these folks tonight, or just call the restaurant number. And, you know, we want to be accountable to you to do that. And if you need to get the township involved and make us accountable, we will, but I don't think you will. And we want to be good neighbors. And I think what you're suggesting, even as to property we don't own, we have rights to park there, and they should police that, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. I'm satisfied. Thank you. Appreciate it. I saw some hands raised before. If you want to, please come to the podium to state your name and address.
Dave Bamaka, 8327 Petrella Lane. Yeah, I was thinking about, you know, I brought up about the concrete wall, and I was suggesting a low concrete wall, thirty inches, thirty-six, just to stop a car. They'd kind of said, no. So in the last few days, I was thinking, well, would you consider a, what do they call, you know, those rails and the posts in the ground, the wood posts in the ground?
The pallets.
Guard rail, I guess. Besides just the fence, I like maybe a guard rail too. So I was just thinking about that, and, you know, that's a pretty easy thing to put in, and maybe it'd take the place of a concrete wall and stuff. So it's just a thought, a second.
Okay. Any other speakers?
Cheryl Sprague, 8316 Petrella Lane. I just had one question. One of the things that I brought up was having a neighborhood committee to kind of work with the ongoing construction of all this to kind of keep, keep informed as to what's going on so that they're updated. I don't know if it could be weekly or, you know, just to let them know if all this takes place and there's construction and a lot of things going on, to let them know and keep in contact with them. I wonder if there was any discussion about that? Any kind of a neighborhood committee that would, you know, I know that you guys have been involved in it all along. Would there be an opportunity for the neighborhood to have some kind of updated information to keep them in the loop, working either, you know, with the ongoing? Because it's going to, when you get in there and you got heavy equipment pulling out trees, and you have, you know, you're going to have a lot of noise, and, you know, I've been around construction sites enough to know that, you know, it's not a quiet thing. And, you know, if they're digging holes for the water and, you know, putting in fences and things like that, I just, I just thought it would be a good idea to have a neighborhood committee just to keep informed. So I didn't know if there was any discussion more about that.
Do you have an email that you could let one of the residents know? Could there be a resident that would step up and give an email, and then if there's going to be?
going to be major construction, you could just shoot out an email to them saying, "New instructions, June second."
I know that the school lets us, yeah, the school lets us know when there's going to be fireworks and all that stuff.
Is that okay with you guys?
Keep in contact.
Okay, I think there's your committee.
Okay.
Okay. That's outside of our bailiwick, that's something you guys have to set up. Okay?
But as a person who works in construction, it is helpful to communicate what's going on, I do get that. He almost, I don't know if it's a weekly update, or at least when, when things are coming, it would be helpful to give folks an update. Yes. Good comment, thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Let's see, we picked up from last week with the public hearing, we've heard from the applicant, the residents, the audience, so at this point, I'm going to move to close the public hearing.
Second. Go ahead.
Second. Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Leece?
Aye.
Mr. Beck?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
There is no old business, so we move into new business. I move approval of Resolution G two zero two-three dash forty-four, resolution approving a major revision to an existing EE planned resident district and zone change application received to change the zoning from A residence to EE planned residence with subservient retail for the lots located at eighty-three twenty-two East Kemper Road and one-one-five four-zero Snyder Road. And as we heard earlier this evening, as part of this resolution incorporating the joint statement as a reference.
Second.
Discussion. Brian, do you have anything else to add to the process?
I do not, no.
Okay. Roll call, please.
I have it right here, but nobody else has it.
I'm sorry?
I just, I'm sorry, I didn't, sorry to interrupt, I just wanted to make sure that we know which version of a resolution that you're voting on.
Good point.
You've moved to adopt it, got a second?
Yes.
And you can have discussion, we.
He added number eleven at the very end of you.
Is that the one that's?
That's the one I just put up.
Yeah, so I just thought it may be helpful for the board.
Yes.
If you, if you take a look, and you may want to actually take a minute to look, but based on the information that was provided to us earlier today related to some of the agreed-upon terms, we have, staff has, we've modified the resolution, and I think it would be helpful if everyone just took a second to look at it. This incorporates the things about the eight-foot fence, the thirty-three and a half-foot buffer, the sixty-nine, you know, the things that we could pull out. I think it would be helpful to note number eleven, and this is at the request of the parties, we did add language that says, "To the extent authorized by law, this approvals in court, this approval incorporates the joint statement." So that is, that language is in the resolution. I just thought it would be helpful if, and for the public, for that matter, that, because this is, this is slightly different than the one that would have been on the agenda a week ago, tried to incorporate these things, so.
And this is all based out of their discussion on Tuesday?
This, the only changes we made were based directly on the joint statement and the plans that they provided to us today. And that's, but I just thought everyone should have an opportunity to see it, make sure that that accurately represents what's before the board, and then the board can have whatever discussion and vote that you're ready to do.
So this reflects the April twentieth information?
Yes, you'll notice there are, I'm sorry, there are a few places throughout here, like number nine, for example, you know, this is where we've captured the new buffer yards, and it references, as shown on the plan submitted at the trustees' meeting on April twentieth, twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three. Same with number ten. I want to make sure that that says it's limited to eighty-nine additional spaces, I want to make sure that that's accurate, because I, a minute ago, I heard someone say.
So that's an eighty-nine, that's an eighty-nine net.
Net, okay, I just, this is what is before the board, I just want to make sure everybody is, understands what's before the board and that it accurately represents what we're doing here, and if not.
I think it would be helpful to add net on ten, because there's actually more than eighty-nine spaces on the subject property, but then you're taking some spaces off the current, so it's eighty-nine net new spaces.
Change additional to net.
I think that's, okay.
Okay.
Well, as long as it's for the whole site, yes, that's fine, and this is really the zoning of the whole site, yeah, so it's fine, yeah.
Okay, that's, okay, yeah.
What was number one?
Number one was one of the existing.
Detailed landscaping plan.
Okay, thank you.
One thing I do want to point out, in our zoning code, we only allow for six-foot fences, so number, we had to add number four for the eight-foot tall fence.
Thank you, I knew that. Okay.
Okay, thank you, sorry for the interruption.
Thank you.
So this is acceptable, acceptable, okay?
Okay.
All right, any other discussion?
Glad it worked out.
Was it seconded? Was seconded?
Was seconded, correct?
Yes.
I seconded.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Beck?
Aye.
Ms. Leece?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye. We have no executive session, I move to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Beck?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Ms. Leece?
Aye.
Thank you, we appreciate your working together on this. Everybody gave a little bit, I think.